Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to have two meetings, council meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve our community and are grateful for the blessing of living here in this community. Praise the wonderful guidance in our deliberations this evening and the things that we discuss will be done in accordance with thy mind and will, then we might continue to have a wonderful, family-friendly community. And we pray that thy Spirit be with us now in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Well, welcome to our media, Channel 32. Welcome to our people in our gallery. We have two delegations. We have Justin Lowe and Skylar Levitt, and we have the representative from Nivo.
From BDI Play Designs.
Okay, all right, so welcome. And we have Tate Sommerfeld, and there we have...
Ben Cord.
Ben Cord, that's who I thought it was. Thank you.
Ben Holzer.
So we will call this meeting to order. It's 5:00 PM on this 23rd day of May, beautiful day.
Turn on the fan.
And we will look at the agenda. We have one addition under 7:00. There will be pool stuff in.
Could I have a question about that too?
I wonder what other somewhere I have a question to ask.
Could you have the question under question?
Yep, absolutely.
So it's regarding...
The dump road.
Dump road.
Bring it once a year, I think.
All right, yes, we do. All right, so that council. All right, so we have two additions. Counselor Vangri?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as...
Amendment?
Yeah. Amendment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thanks. All right, we have our delegations. So who is presenting?
Me.
Good. Justin, please.
Do you want me to stand here?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for letting us come and present to you today. I'm Justin Lowe. I think most of you know me. I'm here as Skylar, Levitt, and Ben Cord. We also have one other person on our committee, the Splash Park Committee from Rotary, and that's James Henline, should be here shortly.
All right, so maybe for the media, I will just give a little bit of background. You are from the Rotary. You have a project that you are interested in developing in a community.
Yes.
That project requires partners.
Yes.
And requires funding.
Yes.
Lots of.
Yes.
Essentially, go ahead with your presentation.
All right. The good thing about our committee is, you know, Skylar was the head of the Playground Committee from Rotary, and James and I were both on that committee as well, and Ben is new to Rotary. So, you know, some of us here have good experience with doing large projects in partnership with the town and other organizations. There's a picture there of the playground one that was done recently. That's turned out to be really a good thing. I don't know if you drove by this weekend, but there was tons of people there having picnics, playing at the playground, and it worked out awesome.
Very popular.
Yeah, and as Rotary, we want to do projects that enhance the community. Other recent ones we did up there, we helped get the C-FIP grant for the water slides, the theater sound system upgrade, we helped provide a lot of money for that. And on an annual basis, we do the Parade, the Music and Speech Festival, the Christmas Carol Concert. We have our two fundraisers, the Dine and Dance and Golf Tournament. So we have a history of working with the town in doing good projects to enhance the town. As we were fundraising for the playground, we had lots of comments, people saying, "Why don't you build a splash park? We really want a splash park." We heard it over and over and over again, and we said, "Well, right now, we're focusing on a playground, but now we've come up with a vision to build a splash park." So we've been working with BDI Play Designs, and that's who Albert represents here, and they do the... They drew up a proposal of a spray park that we can do, and we really like this spray park. And you can see there that there's three main segments to it. The one on the far side has the slides, and it's more of a bigger kid with lots of spraying. On the left-hand side, it's kind of a medium kid-sized area with some loops they can run through, that mist and umbrella. In the middle, you've got three water guns that shoot each other, and on the right-hand side is a toddler section, so that's where there's less spraying on the face, and it's... That's a dump station that you see that kid playing at, where they can kind of play with the water that's in the containers there and have rubber duckies or whatever it might be. So it caters to all different age groups of kids. And there's just another picture from a different angle, and one more picture. So we really like that design. So some of the main questions we talked about, one of the huge ones is water. We looked at a few options. We first looked at just putting water in and then using the water that goes through it and putting it into the sewer as wastewater. This thing at max will run about 550 gallons per minute, so that's when all the things are turned on. Realistically, it'll probably go to about 250 or 300 gallons per minute. That is just a ton of wastewater, a lot of money, and it's a lot of waste, so we've said that's not really an option. We also looked at catching the water in underground cisterns and using that water to irrigate the surrounding area where it's at. Again, with that much water, the cisterns would have to be massive, and even then, we were going to have wastewater. So really, the only way to go is with a recirculation system. You're not wasting water, and it's just continually recycled through and cleaned. That seems like the only way to go. We're going to propose two possible locations. This is our preferred choice. This is a picture of Town Square looking from the north. On the left is the tennis courts and the bathroom. There's quite a big green area there that we think would be great for a spray park. We went through some of the pros. It's a central town location. Lots of people go there for activities, the softball games and tournaments. It would take some pressure off the pool area. That area's quite congested now. We went to the pool a few times last year, and it's a good thing. It's being used heavily, and we actually couldn't get in the swimming pool until some people left just because of how busy it was, and not all people have money to pay to get into the pool as well. So it may take some pressure off that area if it was at Town Square. It is heavily used, so during softball tournaments or whatever else might be going on there, kids can go play at the spray park while those events are going on. It's a large open area. It's better to monitor any mischievous behavior that's going on. You pretty much have a whole block full of citizens who look onto that park and would be able to report anything suspicious going on. It's easy to light up there. Put one big light post by a spray park, and it would just light it all up. And I really like the idea, too, that it's the green area, you can have picnic tables right by it, and just like the playground is down at Lyons Park, it's kind of like a family destination, you know? You can have a picnic, the younger kids are playing on the playground, and the older kids are throwing a baseball or a football, similar to Town Square. Some of the younger kids might be on a spray park, and the older kids are over on a dive and hitting the baseballs, and you can have kind of good family gatherings there. Some cons to that area is you need to purchase a recirculation system, which has been priced out at $50,000. There's really good news about this. BDI Play Designs is working on develop... It's developed a recirculation system that costs that much, that is largely controlled by an app on your phone, so you can get the readings of the chemicals, you can dispense chemicals by pushing buttons on the app. So it really cuts down on the labor needed to monitor the water quality. It's really user-friendly, which is a good thing. And this is James from our committee. One of the cons would also be danger from baseballs. Randy mentioned that he could put up a 10-foot fence over just the little section that would cover the spray park. Depending on where you put it there, if you put it in the right spot, not a lot of balls get hit that deep. Some go over the fence for sure. And the existing playground there right now is actually in the line of fire of softballs as well, but that hasn't been a huge issue. But there are things we can do to prevent that. The seniors also have bocce ball interest in that area. They were playing yesterday, and they had an area mode, and I looked at it, and I think there's... Those two don't have to be mutually exclusive. There's room for both. I saw where they were playing, and then there's still lots of open space there for a spray park.
Have you talked with any of the seniors about what they really want?
They want to be close to that bathroom.
They do, but they need three... They need at least three courts.
Okay.
And that wouldn't work. And Jim, we've been talking about possibly over on the southwest area there, and we could put in porta-potties or something there too that might work, but if you were going to have it here in this location, you probably wouldn't be able to have three bocce ball courts at the same time. I don't think there's enough room there for all that.
It depends on how big they are.
They're pretty good size, so they're looking at having competition and stuff, and they want to be able to have their lawn chairs in between the courts and stuff like that. So they need a pretty big area. I've been out there with them. I've been talking with them for a couple of years.
We'd have to take a look at the size they need and map it out.
If there was any way you could do it, I prefer that area myself for the bocce ball too.
Yeah. We'd have to take a look and map out the size of what they need and what this needs because there's a chance they could both fit there.
You want to talk to Leonard for now?
Okay.
We have, actually.
Have you talked with Leonard?
We talked to him last week about it.
Okay.
We thought it was long going.
Leonard did agree.
But Lon Moe, Lon Moe, but he corrected us and told us it was bocce ball, so.
Or box store, guys.
I can't tell you how much joy I get out of being mayor. I live right at home.
I don't know if I should mute myself, but...
So I guess what we're saying is, regardless of what happens, I think we can work it out for both parties. Like, we just have to do some planning and mapping and stuff. The second location, this is just south, directly south of the swimming pool. You see the pad there, and that's where the skate park used to be. The good thing about that is we could likely hook into the same recirculation system as the swimming pool, so it would save us the fee of the recirculation system. Just taking a look at some of the cons of that area, we're not sure about the plans for that area. We'd heard that there were potentially other plans, maybe a basketball, an outdoor basketball...
We're talking about that and parks and recreation.
Yeah. The area would probably need some either digging down or leveling up. It's kind of take more site prep. When we talked about the green space and the picnic tables and stuff around there, making it a family destination, the landscape around there is kind of tough because you've got the road right on the west and on the south. It's kind of less of a green parky area to go have a family activity. It is getting increasingly congested, and there's... Sometimes there's trouble parking there when the pool's full, and... Someone in our meeting mentioned lots of dust from that road. When people are driving into the Lyons Park, lots of dust blows in there, and they're... I mean, the pool's sheltered because it's the building and the walls and stuff, but a spray park would get lots of dust. One mom mentioned she's worried it's a little bit closer to Main Street and some of the traffic there. And potentially, there's more transient individuals there who may want to take a shower compared to a place like Town Square. So with that being said, our preferred site would be Town Square, but we're open to discussing both options. We also talked about a lot of different places in town, but those two seem to be the most logical and practical. So the cost, this is an official quote from BDI Play Designs. It has each component of the spray park, and it has on the bottom, it talks about excavation and installation and cement and all that kind of stuff. It comes up to $386,787.60. We can shave $5,000 off that by doing excavating ourselves, and Joe Ripley has offered to do that as a donation. So our cost would be $381,787.60. There's good news. Ben Cord offered to pay 60 cents.
That's very generous.
So now it's only $381,787. Yeah, he's... He joined the Rotary Club to make a difference, and that's...
Yeah.
That's all I got. Now, there will be other costs as well. So if you see on here, we've got our BDI quote. Joe Ripley donated the excavation, he said, which is $5,000. Now, we would need a 12-by-8 shed to house the recirculation system and like the chemicals and stuff. And that's just an estimate of what that shed might cost. We've talked about possibly adding on to the existing bathroom that's there. It would probably need a little cement pad with the shed and...
Are you talking like a concrete-type, brick-type structure that's more...
It's storage.
I'd just go to shed for less than $5,000, so I hope it's a lot better than what I built.
Yeah.
And I built a really nice one.
Albert, do you know what kind of shed it would have to be there?
You know what? It really doesn't matter, and just as a correction, it's really just for the valve system, you know, the valves and the pump system.
Okay.
The research system itself, like the tank for the research would be under the ground, removed away from that. So it would just basically contain all the controls, and that would be the minimum size if you'd want to go. I mean, to have a little bit more space would be great.
Okay.
There's no specific requirement. It just needs to be kept out of the weather, you know? So if you want to go fancy, you can make it out of concrete, but you can also just stick frame, it's fine. I know in Form 4 at the time, they ended up getting local businesses to donate various parts of the shed, and they combined it also as a dressing room and washroom area. So regard, depending on what your requirements are, needs or whatever, but that was just...
Okay.
Because that helps.
Perfect.
So the fact that you put town in brackets is what you hope?
Yeah. At the end of the... At the very end, we've got to think that what we would hope the town would...
That's hope.
Yeah. The shed is something that we may be able to get from local businesses and maybe even some local labor to help, so we may be able to shave that down for sure. We throw on some picnic tables, which have a cost, landscaping after, like just putting sod around the area that's kind of been torn up as the construction happened, and again, that's just an estimate. And lighting, we spoke to...
Leonard Nichols.
Leonard Nichols, and he just gave us an estimate of what it would take to put up a pole with one of those big LED lights to just light it up, and that's the estimate there. So we're looking at a total cost of $417,987. So where are we going to get the money? This is what we would propose. A C-FIP grant, we're familiar with those. Normally, that's up to $125,000. We discovered that there is a larger C-FIP grant that can give you between $125 and $1 million, and we think if we have all our ducks in a row and everything, we have letters from all these people in support, and we go to C-FIP, and that's all the money we need and left, that we'd have a really strong application, and we'd have a good chance of getting it. That's a make or break. If we get the C-FIP, it can go ahead. If we don't get the C-FIP, we can't go ahead with it because that's a lot of our funding. From the town, we would hope that there would be $70,000 cash and then help with the shed, the landscaping, and the lighting, and that's just a total there. The county, we... Now, the county was really supportive of the playground project. They gave us $30,000 for that. Because this is more expensive, we would hope they would give us a bit more. The Rotary Club would put in some of our fundraising money. We only get maybe $20,000 to $25,000 a year just from our fundraising from our two things, so that represents a significant chunk from us. There is the Community Foundation of Leftbridge and Southwestern Alberta grant that we got for the playground that we could get again. Fundraising, we... For the playground, we raised $35,000, and that's the goal that we would have again. And Joe Ripley would donate the excavating, and that gets us to $419,500, which is more than... 1,500 more than was the total cost that was estimated. So a timeline, the large C-FIP grant, you can apply for it every October, so we would apply in October 2017, and they let you know between February and April 2018. If we get the C-FIP and we had everybody else's support, then this could be done in the spring, summer 2018 if we had the C-FIP grant.
Can I ask you something?
Yeah.
This is a marvelous project. Timeline, it's a little bit my worry.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to complete a large infrastructure project that we have in our budget and at this point did not get our C-FIP grant, so we already show $200,000 that we have to figure out how to pay for it. So I'm looking at it not to be a party pooper, but to be a realistic player here, because this never came in our discussion at the time of our budget. I'm trying to figure out how do we make it work now that we already have set the mill rate, already have decided how much revenue we have in. So at this point, we are pretty well to look as a town for $97,000. So just as I thought, it's a little bit of a concern of mine. The project has totally support. The how we're going to get there has me a little concerned with that very short timeline. If we had a little bit more or if we could make it a little bit longer, I think it could be a go. So maybe those are things that we need to kind of discuss and figure out how we can help you and help the community benefit from such an incredible project in a realistic manner within the confinement of budgets.
Yeah.
It's not to be a party pooper. It's just to be realistic.
So real quick here, Vangri, so with that, that's... We've talked a lot about that, right? Because it's all about timing and we're about budgets and making things happen, just kind of like the playground. The one thing that we're trying to go for is that the nice thing with the C-FIP grant, it's a two-year project, right? So the C-FIP is obviously very important, and so we wanted to get our ducks in a row so we can try to get that. And if it has to take longer, that's something that we were looking at as well, right? So that we're not... Because it's like, which one do you go first, the carriage of the horse or whatnot, right? Because you might get the town, or you might not get the C-FIP. You might get the C-FIP but not the town, you know? And so that's kind of the part of the plan, right?
Once you get the large C-FIP grant, they give you 30 months, so they give you longer time to finish your project than the short... Than the smaller C-FIP.
So is that C-FIP grant conditional on having the money of your partners upfront?
If we had... I would think if we had letters of support.
So here, because I've dealt with the C-FIPS a little bit, with the last one and this one, just look at what's written there, reading through all this stuff, the small C-FIP is a little bit more easier to go about, and here's what we got, and you kind of have to have things in place. The large C-FIP is a little more strict, so they want to see a real good budget, they want to see how you're accomplishing, and they probably want to see a lot of things in order to get that C-FIP grant.
So you're trying to say they want to see the money upfront?
That...
Well, I don't think the money upfront, I think...
No, sorry. Are you asking, does the money need to be submitted to them or have a letter proposed?
Like earmark, earmark all your project.
Letters of commitment. Like if you had a letter of commitment from the town saying, "We'd be willing to... We're willing to put this much into the project." They don't need to see the cash right then, they just need to see the commitment.
And can you then unassess that kind of idea since we're talking money, which is the most difficult issue right now? Can you foresee a possibility of a C-FIP grant with a letter of support from the town saying, "We could do it, but over a stretch of period," for example, as committing to reserving and earmarking that a chunk of money every year towards such a project, say, as a council, we can make a motion to say we support that project with so much reserve per year for the next three years, for example, if that's what it takes? Is that something that is feasible?
To be honest, I think we need to go and find that answer first specifically.
Okay.
Because we need to find out, does that cash need to be in the bank and show proof of cash, and can you stretch it out a long time?
Okay, so those are the questions that I have personally, and I think it might answer some of the concern of council. Counselor Vangri, I see you patiently waiting.
Rotarians, this is a tremendous project. As a former Rotarian and president of the club in 2000, it was my project for the Main Street Clock, and that was a big one. Other communities are envious of Cardston's Rotary Club. Some comments on your location. I love the Lyons Park location, and I'll tell you why. Because it could be added to the swimming pool, to the playground, there's a picnic area there, and I'm wondering, even south of that cement pad, downward, there used to be a camp kitchen. I'm looking at water, the infrastructure for water delivery. That's a lot of water, you know, and I don't know if our infrastructure around the Town Square is large enough to deliver that kind of water. We'd have to go through the public works to do that. A spray park in the Lyons Park added to the swimming pool could be fenced off so that you have a separate entrance into the spray park, which would be free. But here's the question. When you pay for a swimming pool entrance, is it going to take away from your people involved in the swimming pool if they can go to a spray park free in the same location? Are we taking away from the income of the swimming pool with a free spray park? And spray parks are fantastic, but there has to be control and everything else, and I just... I like the location of the Lyons Park because it adds to that family park orientation. But I'm just wondering about that pay and no pay and things like that, and the water infrastructure.
Counselor Vangri, you have questions. You raised some things that later on we could discuss among ourselves.
Oh, yes.
Because they are very important points. All those points are important. And thank you for reminding us of those points to look at. Maybe the Rotarians want to complete their presentation or...
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question. Yeah, there was just one thing I wanted to add today.
I'm sorry.
I think what you're referring to, when you're talking about the infrastructure to be able to feed that type of volume of water, that's what you're referring to, right? Gallons per minute. So in this particular case, going with the recirculation system, it actually requires almost no gallons per minute. All we need is a three-quarter inch line to feed it to take care of evaporation losses.
It's a loop.
Other than that, it's being recirculated, so all the water is contained.
Okay, all right.
All right. So one of the main concerns is how much extra work will it be to maintain a splash park? I know that's a concern. If it's at the Town Square and we have that recirculation system, it's a very user-friendly recirculation system. There will be some general maintenance and upkeep, you know, to make sure the area's mowed, which they do anyway, and it looks okay. But I guess the main thing is there, if it's going to enhance the community and be a destination for families to go, then it's worth the extra work that's there. But we don't think it'll be too onerous. And also, if it's down by the pool, it'll just go under the recirculation system there, and the same kind of general maintenance as far as mowing around it and upkeep would apply there as well. So vandalism, that's always a concern. The Nivo product that we have here is metal, and we found that the playground, when you ensure good lighting, it goes a long way to help prevent vandalism. Like, that's very well lit, and that's a huge part, so we'd have to make sure there was good lighting. And then you just have to, like the playground, rely on people reporting any suspicious behavior that's around. Yes?
Can I ask you something about the lighting? When we had our EMS building with a new LED light, we had nothing but complaints from the neighbors. So I'm just wondering, one good thing creating one issue, that is maybe something we also need to kind of factor in, because the neighbors would have that light, I don't know from what time to what time you would have it on if you intended to have it all night long.
That's the way the playground is.
And that might become an issue for the neighbor. So those are little things we need to think about, because we had enough letters telling us to figure out a way to put a shield on the light at EMS because the neighbor were frustrated with the light.
The one thing about that bottom point is suspicious behavior. To have the location by Town Square, there's a lot more houses. And I know with lights, talking with Leonard, you can actually turn down the intensity of the light.
Yeah, yeah.
He's able to do that. I did talk to him about that, so he is able to kind of...
That's also a good point, you know? We look at the whole thing.
Just a clarification on your costing. That $381 includes the $50,000, so if we were giving it down at the...
Right.
By the pool, that $50,000 wouldn't need to go in there.
Exactly.
That brings down to 330.
330.
Yeah.
I'm assuming this would probably have about the similar season as the pool, maybe about three months or so. I'm just curious, what would the chemical cost, you know, for chemical for this system?
Good question. Any idea?
Chemical cost is very low. It's just basic chlorine. I know sometimes I get asked the question, "Can you also provide saltwater systems?" My answer to that question is no. We can, it's possible, but it's costly. It's a lot more maintenance and a lot more, it's just a lot more work. Salt is a lot less or slower recovery time than chlorine does. Chlorine is very cheap.
Basically liquid tank?
Yeah, it would just be a liquid chlorine that just gets injected and it's only injected as needed. So it's not like the water that runs through the system that has lost all its chlorine. So it's just the electronic equipment is continuously monitoring it. And that monitoring you can see on the phone app. And as it requires it, it just injects another shot. So it's more than likely it would be a 3,000 gallon underground tank that we'd be working through and that's what it would be monitoring.
Just a couple more quick things. What about people wanting to take a shower? We've had lots of people ask that. It will be used during peak hours of the day, probably, you know, 11:00 AM, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM kind of thing. So hopefully that comes down on it. But we wonder if it would be more if it was down by the pool. We still might run into it, I know wherever you are. But hopefully if it's used frequently and there's kids around, it'll deter people from doing that. So basically, this is our last slide. What we would hope to need from the town of Cartson is basically your approval to proceed with the project so we can apply for grants and fundraise. We already talked about the $70,000 in the shed and the landscaping and the lighting. The irrigation, talked about the size of pipe that we would need just to go so they could hook in. And then just basic maintenance with the water quality checking and making sure the area is looked after.
Okay, well, thank you very much, council. Do you have specific questions you feel we need to answer?
Do you have any idea what the overall cost of operation will be?
On a yearly basis?
We probably need to work with the town with that to kind of get an idea, same with maybe with Alberta or some of these systems, or look at other towns that have, there's water to...
Certainly the chemical cost and there's not much water cost because it's a recirculation. We don't know the exact number, but it would probably be...
The other question is, would that tank have to be drained every year? Otherwise it could freeze.
Yes. So once a year the tank would have to get drained, it would just get pumped empty. I can give you just a few, a few things just from a maintenance perspective or a usage perspective. So the pump that we would use to feed this spray park, we could almost go whatever we want. We could go with a 200 gallon per minute tank, we could go with a 500 gallon per minute pump, I mean. And depending on how many zones you'd want to run at once, because we can divide it up into five zones if we want to. So we can divide things up so that per zone, we're only using 100 gallons per minute. You know, so depending on how many gallons per minute we're throwing out, that's how big a pump we're going to need, that's how much power it's going to be using. You know, it would be a variable speed pump. So we could keep the pressure continuous, which they generally don't use a lot of power, but I mean, that is something you'd be looking at. More than likely in this system, I would recommend also to put in a small recirculation pump for times when the spray park isn't being used, that your water doesn't get stale. You know, so if there's two or three days or whatever that it's sitting there, that this small circulation pump is automatically programmed that so many hours a day it still recirculates the water, that way you have accurate monitoring. You know, so there's a very, very minimal cost in that. The power usage on that would be almost nothing. As far as like the monitoring goes, just like with the pool, it is mandatory that chemical levels get checked every single day. You know, that's something that everybody knows that regardless of how many apps you have and how user-friendly you make it, there still has to be that person there that actually does the test to make sure that your app is actually giving you an accurate reading. You know, so that's a mandatory thing, but that's generally done by the same person that does the pool, you know, so it's a five-minute thing.
All right.
Other than that.
Thank you very much. Well, you gave us a lot of ideas. You're thinking about alternative locations possibly?
Yeah. Yeah. Councilor Bantry, now we're just kind of throwing back the idea that, thought that soccer field up there.
That was one of the locations we talked about. There's lots of stuff, I mean, there's a playground up there, there's picnic tables. Most kids that are up there are playing soccer and I don't know how much issue that would cause with the soccer club and the kids wanting to go to a spray park and stuff like that. I guess I just look at it as, we've got several really family user-friendly places where families can go and have a picnic and do lots of different things. Town square, the playground is, you know, small and it's not a huge place for families to go as a whole to do that kind of thing. It'd be nice to just kind of enhance that area as well. I mean, there's lots that goes into the decision. We talked about Sunrise Park over by Skylar's house. We talked about down by the Sunset Park, down by the provincial building, down where the old tourist stop was, by the creek. People throw around lots and lots of ideas and we've taken a look at all of them, but these two just seem like the best.
But sometimes what it comes down to, and it's a funny thing, but Cartson's small, it's all about location, right? Even though that's not very far away, but because it's not right in the middle, it just doesn't get used as much and things like that, right? So it's just kind of how it goes.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and I really applaud the Rotary for coming up with another very interesting project for town. Like I say, we need to figure out how to make it possible from all ends. You have the big idea, you have the vision, you have the ability to write the grant. We have to figure out how to manage a budget in order to make it happen. Okay. So thank you so much. We will talk about it a little bit later on. Right now we have a youth delegation. And if you wish to stop and hear us debate, you are more than welcome. Otherwise, what we can do, we can, you can see the YouTube and you can have Jeff be your reporter, whichever you choose. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, Tate Sommerfeld and your crew, Rich and...
So Rich couldn't make it, so we have Damon and Marley.
Damon, of course, Marley.
So we're here from the Mayor's Youth Council to do a report on how the year went and kind of give the youth's voice.
Yeah, so very sweet.
We are first of all, very, very happy to have the youth come to council. It's very refreshing because you have a voice and in not so many years you'll be able to vote. And those votes will be very important, a way to show that your voice is important. So thank you for coming and hopefully we'll have something interesting to hear from you.
You bet.
Yeah. So first, we'd like to thank Merkrone for inviting us to be on the Youth Council.
Yeah, there were many different reasons. It was interesting and intriguing and students wanted to be on the Youth Council. A deeper understanding of what happens in the local government was one of them, along with chances to learn about different little aspects.
Thank you.
So you were going to talk about what we learned. We, Merkrone taught us a few different things about, we talked first about how people would run for council, about the different aspects of your platform and things. And she talked a bit about her platform and considered what we would like to do if we were to run. We also talked about the role council members play. We thought it was interesting how it was divided, the different shares between what council controls and what the CEO and the administration controls. We were into where the different things that they did or the different roles that they played before, so we all found that interesting.
All right, for next year, we want to carry, like, keep going with what we have started and...
So Marley, you're in grade 11.
Yeah.
Right now. And Damon?
Grade 12.
Grade 12 and Tate, you're grade 12. So you will carry the torch, Marley. And I'm happy that you will be carrying the torch. Thanks so much.
Yeah, one of the things that was brought up in the last year's Youth Council was a youth center. And this year we had a look at it and got this year's and these students' opinions on it. We think it's still a good idea, not to give up on it. But we think it needs to be something, especially for the youth, right? So it's something, a good project for next year's to continue with and look at and find out where it would fit in the town and how it would be used and the different details about it. And so...
Yeah, that was one of the major reasons that we think that a carryover, getting the younger students involved could be good because the last Youth Council all graduated and none of Vermont anymore, so we don't really have their vision and weren't involved in it. So it was harder to carry on with their projects. So we thought it'd be a good idea for next year to have Marley and Rich and get some younger grade 11 students involved every year so as to continue for long-term plans.
Good. So in other words, you would like to see a mayor and youth council really have students, not only from grade 12, but have a portion of that body to be grade 11?
Yes, and that's what we tried to share.
To create continuity.
Very well, yeah.
Which you are right, last year we did not have that continuity, which is the way it just happened.
Yeah.
So would you like to say something else, Tate?
Nope. In closing, we just, we're very, very thankful for the opportunity to get to learn more about the town and participate and give the students a voice.
Okay. So councilors would love to ask you a question, I'm sure. So Councilor Bantry.
How many students are on this right now?
There were seven.
There's a few that aren't attending anymore, but Matthew Shipley was also on and he couldn't come, he's in Luffish today.
Yeah. There were, I believe at the start of the year, there were seven or eight students, but we consistently had six.
Yeah.
I think, students that would come to the meetings regularly and be really involved.
You also suggested a youth recreation?
Yeah, that was one of the projects that last year's Youth Council was working on and they had quite a vision for it. We didn't really catch the vision of it this year, but we're hoping that next year, those students, if they have a passion for it and they can find out what they want to do, we'll be able to continue with that project.
I have a daughter that lives in a community that has a youth recreation building, but they use it for Keelatch kids. Both parents are working, so when the kids are out of school, they go to the recreation center where they're supervised and where they can do their homework and whatever. I like that idea. I would promote that idea 100%.
There you go, Marley. You can find the councilors that might give you a few ideas. Councilor Bantry?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry that Rich couldn't come, but I was really excited today to see that he went up to the Alberta Legislature to participate in that. Did anyone else go?
I believe it was only Rich from our school.
From your school, okay. Did he have a chance to talk to you or give you any kind of report on...
He hasn't reported to me, no. I wouldn't know.
Okay. Well, anyway, it was good. So when you talked to Rich, just telling, congratulations for that achievement at the Alberta Legislature, I thought that was great.
For sure.
Wonderful. Okay, somebody else?
I want to just make a comment.
Go ahead.
When I was your age, I was the president of a youth club that we had in our hometowns called Club 65. So that's 1965. And I was in the club for two years. We had a town-owned place that we went and we used to go and listen to music. We had concession there, we could buy stuff. It was a really neat place, especially in the summertime, it was really well-used. Mostly it was kind of seasonal, but I could see a year-round use for something like this. In the summertime, it was just a neat place for kids that parents were working and stuff and they could come and go as they, as they wanted. They had specific hours during the day right after. I think it was up to about 5 o'clock at night from about 10 in the morning, you know, so it took in those time periods. And I remember being very impressed that the kids that came weren't troublemakers and the ones that wanted to be didn't have a chance to be troublemakers because they got caught up in the good thing that it was and the fun times, the fellowship that we all, that we all had. It's really, I'm on a Facebook group of all my friends down in Ontario and every once in a while, somebody will throw, "Remember Club 65?" One of us, and we had well over 100, 150 members. And they still remember that. We used to take field trips to different towns, go to, they used to have dance clubs and we would go to them or we'd go to plays and different things. And it was just, it was a fun cultural thing. And so I encouraged Marley to, you know, to work on it. I think it would be a great thing. I agree with...
Okay, Councilor Bantry?
Count on your fingers, that was a hippie age.
Damon, Marley and Tate, thank you so much for coming. It's really great for you to be there, you're on the front of the media and I want to congratulate you for having stuck with it. Because for me, I never really know what the format should be. And I think that is something that obviously needs to be flexible, reflect a little bit your needs, but for us also to hear your voice, it's important. What the project from your previous peers give head to, it has not been shown. We are still looking at what it could look like. Their vision was to have it on the top of the arena, on a mezzanine whenever there was a change.
Yeah, renovation on that.
A renovation. Marley, that is a beginning, that is a foundation you may have and see if there is something that can be pushed in that direction or totally different direction. That will be your group to decide. And if you want to do a year-end presentation, we will help you with whatever you need to know regarding costing, regarding engineering, regarding whatever it might take for you to bring that to pass as an idea, a conceptual idea. I don't say reality yet.
One other thing. Back in the day when we had our group, they had grants and place for someone of the youth that would be kind of the leader of that group and help organize the different events. And I happen to be in payroll for the town, my hometown at that time, they got a grant from the provincial government to do that. So that's something that could be moved out down the road too. So there is an organization, it's not just a hangout place, it's an organized thing. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so very much for coming and we look forward to recognize you in some ways for your participation in Mayor's, Mayor and Youth Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Tate, by the way, we want to say I was at the honor, the Native Honor Grant night. You have a pretty mean dance move.
Thank you.
It was very beautiful. Much appreciated.
You betcha.
Thank you. Bye.
Take care.
Yeah, he's a very talented gentleman. All right, we need to go, five adoption of minutes, regular meeting, May 9.
I move to adopt the minutes of the council meeting, May 9, 2017.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Under five, the special meeting of council, May 15, 2017. As you remember, we had that meeting, council agreed.
Yeah, I will make the motion to adopt the minutes from our special council meeting.
Of May 15?
Yeah, May 15.
Do we do questions after or are we both?
You got a question?
If you have questions...
I do have a question. Just reading this over, I've put myself in the mind frame of a citizen and I'm trying to figure out what the meeting was all about, other than it was a mail rate. And I guess as a citizen, I would have wanted to know why the special meeting was held. And I didn't get that.
There was, the meeting was publicized with the reason for that.
Your minutes usually won't give you that.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It does not always fill all the gaps.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go to the vote, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, under six, bylaw and policy, Chief Mountain Regional Solid Waste Authority. As you could see, there is there the bylaws, two bylaws for your perusal and... and approval. We already have given our approval about two months ago. The only concern that I have is regarding the financing. If you look at it as to what we would be responsible for, the numbers that have been plucked for our town is correct. It's 3,585 at the last census. What concerns me is that there are towns around us that take an annual census. And they use an annual census in order to maximize their grant return. But for this very case, which is participation into the funding, the true amount, which is will as, has been used. So I question that type of mathematics, which is one is convenient, you use the highest number. And one is convenient, you use the lowest number. So my point of view, I would like, and councillor Pivo is not there, to take this concern for me. But I do have a concern there. Because in one certain town that is listed there, I know for a fact that there is a 15% discrepancy between the municipal head count and the actual census return. So it's one or it's the other, but cannot be when it pleases you.
So how would you propose that be written into the bylaws then?
I am not 100% sure. Except that the way it should be written is that if a municipality uses their municipal census return to obtain grants, that same figure should be used for requisitions.
I would agree with that.
Yes.
And so that is the tweak that I would like Jeff to make note of in order to let Scott Barton know of our concern. I don't know if you want a motion to that effect. And maybe, maybe I've just got a nod. So there should be a motion put forward as to that financial item.
So do we make a motion to direct administration to put that together? Or what does our motion need to entail?
Yeah, my thought was direct administration to respond to the authority on concerns about the use of census or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Is that not addressed in item 7A? Is that talking about the, I mean, that was the question of 7A. Do we write this letter to all these boards and say, you know, let's look at the population figures?
It is dealt with in that second paragraph there, yeah.
That's what I was wondering. Do we wait and deal with it then? Or do we need to deal with it in this specific?
I would suggest that given that we're creating, they're creating their new bylaws, do it now. It should be done specifically to them for that, simply for that reason.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to direct administration to write a letter accordingly to the, to the waste authority, using the municipal census and not their own town census.
No, no.
Using the higher, the two of us. Whichever one they use.
It's usually their own census that's the higher.
If they're using it for grants.
So what we want is whatever there is, whatever is being used for their application for provincial grants, that position should be used for.
Use the same figure.
Same figures.
I'll accept that.
Yeah. Because when I saw that, it really surprised me. Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much. All right. So this is dealt with. Under seven, letters to agency boards and committee recensus. So here is a little bit of a follow-up from my previous agenda.
Is that 7A we're looking at right now?
Yes. Yeah, okay, thanks. Okay. So that letter is, what do we do? Do you want to send that letter now and get it done? Or do we look at what's happening from the provincial perspective and hope they have adjusted the numbers? Jeff, what is the procedure from your perspective?
Frankly, I'm just not sure. I know we're gonna, I was in a meeting last week where the municipal fairs was saying they were using the new census numbers in their dealings with municipalities. So I'm assuming groups like FCSS will be using new census numbers. But, you know, Chinook Foundation, Chief Mountain Solid Waste, those on a local level, I don't know. Not sure what. Yeah, the library on Chinook Arch. I'm just not sure what the plan is there. So whether they have to deal with that internally or whether Southgrove or Southwest, I'm just not sure.
I would think that Southgrove and Alberta Southwest are going to use the census that are on their next requisition. I'm pretty sure.
And they may.
As for the other ones.
Fire, that's the other one? Fire is, it needs to be reviewed.
And those are more difficult to deal with in some way that is always such a political battle there.
So I would suggest that we do send a letter to those requisition authorities, maybe initially requesting clarification on which numbers their intent is to use in calculating the requisition. And that may be enough to soft pedal the issue.
I would like to know how the province deals with towns that have both a municipal census and a federal census. I really would like to know what are the numbers that the province is using?
Well, I would suggest that the only reason why a municipality would be doing the census is if the province would use that number in calculating the grants. So I would suggest that that's the number they use.
You would hope, right? You would hope.
Mayor, what do they use for MSI funding?
They're using the new census numbers. Or municipal census if it's higher.
And because the municipal census has to be forwarded to the province and it has to be approved by the ministry as.
And that's what I'm getting at.
Accurate.
If that's the accurate number that the province is getting from the municipality, then that is the number that should be used right across.
That's what we need to know.
And I think we just need to send a letter to all of our requisition authorities requesting clarification. Because I think that alone will be enough to push the issue.
So the letter will be tweaked a little bit. Okay. All right. Are you okay with that? Do you need a motion to that effect to tweak the letter, councillor?
So I'll move that we send the letter to our requisition authorities requesting clarification on how they're calculating their requisitions.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
I would just suggest that it be similar in tone to the one that we're talking about for the solid waste, to saying, you know, that if you're using this population figure for.
Which is what the letter has in the second paragraph.
For your grant, then it should be the same requisition.
Right. Okay. All in favour? Thank you very much. All right. Okay, let's talk about the Rotary Golf Tournament. As you could see, there is an advertisement regarding that. That was what alerted Jeff regarding the spray park initiative by the Rotary, which is a beautiful initiative. But we were not so 100% sure how the funding was going to come. Regardless of this issue, we always have sent a team and participated any amount of $500 to that golf tournament for fundraising purpose. So if you are in favour of this, I need a motion to send a team and at a level of $500 for the tournament. Questions? Motion?
I'll move to support the Rotary Golf fundraiser to the 500, is it 500 or 550 dollars?
550.
And see if we can put together a town team.
Okay. All right.
We usually have a town team. We're not very good. I have in the past.
Okay.
Should have at least one councillor.
And any councillors should take priority on the team, so let me know.
If you have any interest in going golfing there, please let Jeff know and he needs.
I can show up for the steak dinner.
Ask for a motion, councillor, volunteer myself to go to fill the council's bushes.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you. Janet Wald, Summer Market. That is a very interesting letter that was forwarded to us. To make it really short, in the past, the Act Society did not have to go through the rigorous process of the health inspection regarding food. Now, this is different. There is now a requirement to have the use of a industrial kitchen. The issue is that more cost added to, to that is $50 per day when they use the kitchen. They use it about 10 times, but $500. And really, it cuts down in their profit at the end of the day. It doesn't really make it worthwhile for them to do all that. So I don't really think $500 is going to break the bank. And I think if we can let them use the kitchen with a proviso that if there is another group that needs to use it for a fee, that they will have to find a different venue, be another kitchen.
I think there has to be some policy use of that kitchen down there because I don't think we should rely on our maintenance man to have to clean that kitchen every time it's being used. I mean, there has to be something in place so that if we do allow them to use the kitchen and it's left the way it's found. And I'll tell you, sometimes it's found in pretty rough shape.
That's a different story.
But that's what I'm saying is, and are they going to have access to the rest of the building while they're using that kitchen? And so forth and so on.
The bathroom problem.
So having played in that health inspection, kitchen, commercial kitchen world a little bit last year, it definitely, that kitchen has to be spotless when they're finished with it. But I also think that it's important that we support this. And so I'm prepared to make a motion that we grant this request of waiving the kitchen rental fees. But I would like to incorporate councillor Ben-Gree's suggestion there that there be a policy that they sign on to with the use of that kitchen.
Okay. Could we maybe?
Do they have a list of things that?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Could we develop a list of to-do?
Have our administration.
Right. That's something that could be added to the contract.
Because the commercial kitchen, if it's not kept to those standards, will lose its commercial kitchen status. And then you've defeated your whole purpose, so.
Yeah. Totally agreed with you. And so it should be.
So there is a motion.
Okay. Any other questions regarding that? No. All in favour? Thank you very much. All right. This last, arising. Can we do 7E first quickly?
Sure.
Okay. We have administration that received a letter from Doug Saunders, the pool manager, and that has been a glitch. We can fix it with no problem at all. So go ahead.
Yeah, there's glitches, but go with me for a second.
Okay, all right. I call it, please.
The solution is equally as simple.
I can barely even know where this is.
Yeah, it's okay. Doug has hired his staff and found, realized after the fact that some are direct relatives of current staff. And we had this once before. He's hired a Ringwald girl, Mario's daughter, and request a variance of the policy to hire her at the pool. And I, Mario would never be in a supervisory role for her. There's, they don't cross paths. And then the other thing that he did is he hired a couple of siblings simultaneously. So at the first, the one didn't work there when he hired the other because they were hired at the same time. So I got the whole list from, basically what we have, Emma Beazer's worked for us for years. Her younger sister Clara is there as a junior guard. And then Micah and Shailie Stewart have been hired, they're siblings. What he's done this year is we actually have more lifeguards working than we normally have. But a lot of them are junior kids working very short amounts of time over the summer. So for example, with the Ringwald girl, she's only working four weeks. And so they're junior kids that are getting a little exposure. You know, they're probably working another summer job somewhere. And they're getting in on some shifts to try and learn. A lot of these kids don't have their bronze cross. They actually can't lifeguard. But they can teach lessons and they can supervise the water slide. So he has them positioned, and frankly, they're cheaper labor for us, frankly. So he has them positioned in more limited shifts and in different responsibilities. So we are hiring more kids total over the summer than usual, but the payroll stays the same. The total man-hours will remain the same, just over more kids. So what I would request is a motion of council to approve the hiring of the Beazer girl, the Stewart sisters, and the Ringwald girl as a variance to the hiring policy.
Okay. Councillor, about this?
I'm prepared to make that motion that we authorize a variance to the hiring policy for the Beazer girl, the Ringwald girl, and the Stewart sisters.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that?
I was going to suggest, we have a precedent already. We had three sisters hired for this. We were short-staffed and we needed to have them. So it sounds like we don't have enough that he's making those.
Essentially, you're bringing this to the future.
And if we weren't hiring a number of these juniors, then none of these would even be coming before you. He's just trying to give a little bit of exposure. They're young. They want to see if this is something they want to get into. They can look at getting their bronze cross certifications over the winter, those kind of things. So they're going to get limited exposure to the facility this summer.
I think it's a very good plan for future employment for those young people. Okay, we have a motion on the table. All in favour? Thank you very much. Done. All right. Let's go back then to 7D2 quickly because this one won't take time. The Mayor Youth Council, I really appreciate having our youths come. And they're very candid and very honest. And I'm glad to see that we will have a grade 11 step up to the plate next year and look for a project. And we are always recognizing those young people by sending a letter to them, a personal letter, to let them know that they can use that reference if they're looking for employment. Yes.
Mayor, just for clarification in my own memory, did we have them come to council and you present that last year? Do any councillors remember that?
Yes.
I thought they came, you did a handshake, a picture.
Yeah.
Okay, would it be the intention we book a meeting for them to come back and do that again?
I think it would be a bad thing if we could do something like that.
Yeah, and ring the whole.
Ring the whole room.
Yeah.
Yeah. And give them their letter. Okay. Thank you so much. Now, let's go with 7D. We heard of an exciting project from the Carston Rotary Club. It is not without question as to how do we do it in order to get there? The project is a wonderful idea. I have no problem with the project. Where I think we need to focus our attention is how financially we are able to help a group that did not have that presentation before budget was set, that has not worked with sparks and right within their master plan, but that has a project that is a worthwhile project. So there are some questions that I put forward to them because I was, I wanted to know if they knew the answer. they knew the answer that I had for my questions. Like the C-FEP, that's a special grant, I do not know the requirement of such a grant. I do not know if the letter of support will do it, and I am concerned about the short timeline. Two thousand and eighteen seems to be so short considering that we need to come up with ninety-seven thousand dollars to be able, well, plus the other...
It's the cash part, it's the...
Yeah, but even seventy thousand.
Agreed.
And then, and then the non-cash item. So, those, it's not, it's not doable, it's how do we make it doable within a budget, a future budget?
So, my first comment echoes what your concerns were, in that we just sent out tax allowances with the mill rate. So, our budget for this next year is kind of sad. So, for, to make a commitment in this fiscal year for that, I think would be irresponsible of us, because the funds aren't there for it.
Yeah.
And we're running a pretty tight budget as it is. But I would like, I think this is a really good project, and I would like to see us make a commitment to them based on being able to do the funding for the 2018 budget and find a way inside of there for that to be our major project that we do for that year.
Okay. So, that is an interesting point, counselor. I'm trying to understand now that our C-FEP has fallen through, how is it affecting our budget for next year? Because all that, all of a sudden, is coming all at a head, and I'm not so sure I understand how we do that.
So, you may recall when we learned between December and then mill rate budget that we weren't getting the C-FEP, we essentially drained capitalization policy reserve to cover the difference, with the intent that we looked for alternative sources, but we plugged the hole in the dam...
Yes, yes.
...to fund it for that point in time. So, we took a hundred and seventy thousand bucks out of capitalization policy reserves to fund the pool renovation. Now, we also, from a couple of years ago, we have a motion on the table to borrow up to five hundred thousand dollars on the pool, which we haven't done yet, but it's still an option. And so, that's how we covered the shortfall. We intend to keep doing some applications, we intend to try and close the gap with grant funding on that pool renovation, but I just can't guarantee any of that yet.
So, we may be dipping into the loan for that.
Okay. And that's why, what I said to these gentlemen, who I've met with them before, I said, right now, I have an underfunded capital project that's underway, and it's just a tough time to look for substantial cash inside of Parks and Rec. Because we've just depleted our pool reserve over the last three or four years, which is what it was for, that's rightfully what it should have been depleted for. But it's not like we say, oh, well, we've got ten years' worth of pool reserve, and you could reconcile that this is a related pool-type project, but it's at zero, we'll use it all.
Counselor, in favor?
Two things. I think the Rotary, it's an excellent idea, it's a wonderful idea, but I think that they need to do some more digging on the financial, and also, we are in an election year, and maybe this is something that we should hope the new council will deal with in their setting of their financials and so forth, and it might come into line with that.
Okay. I hear you. Now, here is my concern. First of all, I think we need to put first thing first. Are we all in agreement that that is a project worthwhile for the Rotary to do as an addition for our town?
Absolutely.
The first thing we need to do is get that to understand it. So, Counselor Edmonds?
I had one concern.
Okay.
Did they get their Letbridge Foundation grant? Did they get that this year or last year?
Last year. For this project, councilor?
No, for the previous project, like the playground.
They got it for the playground.
Yes, but it would have been last.
That's last year.
So, you're wondering if that one will...
That one, I don't think they'll get, but they might in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, so that's a good point. So, in principle, are you supporting that project? In principle?
In principle, yes.
In principle. And right now, let's look, in principle, are we supporting that?
I am, I've had numerous people approach me officially to get a spray park going here and that.
And in principle, you're supporting it, so am I. So, I think in principle, we as a council support the project. Now, the other issues that we have to deal with is the finances. I've heard it from two different councils, and I'm sure it probably is a concern for all of us. Would it be advisable to have administration propose different kind of possibility regarding the funding and the matching fund for that C-FEP? First of all, we need to understand what that C-FEP entails truly. Is that cash upfront, or is that a letter of support saying that within three years we could have reserved that amount of money in order to move forward with the project? Because if that is the case, I think that's doable. But with the, your comment, Counselor Edmonds, you are correct. They could not, two years in a row, get the money, it's only every second year that they can apply. So, they would not get that money before two thousand and eighteen either. So, I am wondering, would you like to see reserves set aside to be able to create a fund that could be used for that project, so that we can put it in future budgets?
Just questions. If we're to do that, when would we suggest to the Rotary that they begin the project and have it completed by? Because that kind of stems on that, the date lines, because I'm thinking, firstly, I think that we can't do anything this year, I think it has to be, it has to be, maybe this project is a year in advance, and so it's probably next year before we could, well, we can't do anything before next year when it comes to reserving.
We need to...
And I'm okay with that.
But we need to start preparing.
Yes.
We need to financially start preparing, otherwise it'll never happen.
Yeah. Oh, you're absolutely right.
Mayor, I can see us doing, doing a budget with so much money allocated per year to special projects, such as this, you know, so that the councils going on, they look at their budgets and they say, okay, we're going to put fifty thousand or twenty thousand away this year for projects such as this. But the problem that I have with right now is this whole finances could change according to site, and location is a big thing, and that will change the whole financial...
Okay. So, there is, there are many aspects that you mentioned, there are many aspects that you mentioned, Counselor, earlier on, that you're right. First of all, we do not know what the public would prefer either, that have not been consulted either. We do not know what people on square, town square would think of an LED light that's going to be there. If you want to make something feasible, you have to have the people on site and on board, otherwise, they will find all the negative rather than the positive.
Mayor, our town, I think, are on site for a spray park. But the thing of it is, is we also got seniors organization, and we've talked about Bocce Ball and all these other areas on the town square. So, how much town square do we use?
I think that, the question that comes up, what we talked about earlier.
Exactly.
There needs to be some measurements taken and see what is possible.
Yeah.
It might not be possible to put both of them up there. As far as the, their timing for things...
So, looking at October to have that grant?
Well, to make the application for the grant, yeah. And so, that, the first question then is...
What's required?
What's required? Is it required for us to have already allocated the seventy thousand dollars? Or is it a letter of commitment? Or just a commitment letter that we are going to do this? Is that enough to do it?
Yeah.
And if that's the case, then I don't see any problem with their timeline as it is, because they can get that grant and begin things and be in their spring, summer, twenty over.
Here's my concern, Counselor. In all, in a beautiful world, everything will work hundred percent.
Yeah, that doesn't happen.
But as we saw with our C-FEP grant, which we thought we had in soda, it fell through. My concern is the following. If the C-FEP grant falls through, but the contract has been awarded, who is going to be...
Well, there's no contract awarded until they have their financing.
Yeah, he said that's the break.
That's their break, that's their breakpoint, even from their perspective. If they don't get the grant...
It doesn't go.
It doesn't go.
I think Justin said that.
He did.
We don't see if it will go.
Okay. And I just want to be a hundred percent sure that the town will not be on a hook for the whole...
Yeah, no, I agree, but...
Because that would be, honestly, borrowing money for that would be a tough thing to swallow.
I agree.
Okay? And I don't want to swallow that pill, no, not in an election year.
Why, I'm fine with that.
You know, in the past, we've sent out questionnaires to the public, maybe this is something we could do through the town website or the town Facebook page and get some response back and see. I think you'll find out pretty quick what the favor is.
We've spoken in the office, we've spoken administratively a bit about this. I, I'll say I support the project, I think it's a neat piece of infrastructure for the community. It's not without its concerns administratively, don't get me wrong, it's an expensive piece of infrastructure, both from a capital and operational perspective. And we also have current infrastructure that needs replaced, and yet, we look to leapfrog new infrastructure over top of it, and we leave old infrastructure out. We got a couple of playgrounds that need replaced, we've got, you know, other pieces of recreation infrastructure that need replacing. So, I'm not crazy about, you know, leapfrogging some of those things, but I also get, it's, you kind of have to take advantage when you've got a community group that's willing and able to move ahead with this kind of fundraising, and I respect that, got that. For me, it's been more of a timing issue. The location, both locations are possible, Sunset Park's possible, Sock Park's possible. We just haven't had any, we have not engaged with the Rotarians or the public on any level to start getting pros and cons of locations. That's where we're at, and that stuff takes time. Community consultation, questionnaires, open houses, this is the kind of thing, you'd open house and get your feedback and have your community groups. I mean, just as an example, I mentioned downstairs that we may look at getting rid of the Southwest Ball Diamond hypothetically, maybe to accommodate this and the Bocce Ball courts for the seniors. Well, Ben Court, who's also volunteers on Little League, says, whoa, 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 we don't have enough diamonds, it is, you can't do that. So, these things have a domino effect, right?
Yep.
They have a domino effect when you try and make space for new and important infrastructure, well, something's got to give. So, I think there can be a great community engagement piece around this, and if we know we're not having to do anything, we won't even know the results of the C-FEP until probably early 2018.
Yeah.
So, we've got time over this fall and winter to engage the community. We don't know the mechanical logistics, for example. It makes sense that we could share the filtration system with the pool if we put it down there, but I don't know that for sure.
Is it capable of handling that?
Yeah, I have no idea if I can handle another hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day or not, I just don't know.
And how does it adjust to the exact need?
Yeah, and so we'd have to work with the manufacturers and see how we would add that capacity in, and maybe regulation is going to make us actually isolate the one by rule.
Right.
And I could see that as...
Yeah, I can see, well, if someone urinates in the spray park, we don't want it going into the pool and then going through that system, like, it may not be an option. We've simply been hypothetical, but I've been cautious to do too much due diligence because they haven't come to council to see if it's even supported in principle.
All right.
So, that's why I wanted to get them here, so my ask from council, after, you deliberate as long as you want, but my ask would be a motion that says you support the idea in principle, and if you wish to, direct administration to start deliberations with the Rotary Club and report back to council. That would be my ask.
And I think that's what I was trying to...
So, that's exactly what I was going to make a motion for, is that I move that we support the project in principle and direct administration to start conversations with the Rotary Club and getting the details worked out and exactly how this is all going.
Right, okay. I think that works. Counselor Edmonds, question?
One problem you have, the one is the saltwater system, and the other one is a chlorine, you can't...
No, they're both growing.
Both growing.
Yeah. No, 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 they're both growing. Somebody else, their hands up? No? Okay, so we have a motion, and I appreciate your motion, Council Office. I was hoping administration could start to really get the detail for us, because we don't have...
Until we have it, we can't.
Yeah, we can't move forward with the...
Okay, so the approval in principle, we have, and now we have the motion to such a effect.
I should mention too, just for councils, I recognize we have an election year, and probably half of you aren't back around this table next time, I know three of you for sure. But what we'll include as part of that, you discussed how are we going to finance it, what kind of, where would we take this cash?
Right.
Well, we could put together, obviously, that will be part of our due diligence, we'll report back to council, it's, you know, what would be gone if this comes in, and what's the trade-offs? We do have, I mentioned to the mayor earlier, we've been reserving for thirty years, about thirty thousand a year for the pool, and now we may need it to finish this renovation, but maybe if the C-FEP doesn't happen, we talk to them about, well, let's look at this in 2021. And we take some of that money and we look at that, and, you know, we put something in place and show them that there is support for it, and we're not gambling on them getting C-FEP or not, but we'll work through that, including the finance plan, I just didn't mention that part.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor? Thank you. I am really looking forward to such a play water park, it's wonderful thing for the kids. All right, so financial report now, committee and other reports, are they, thank you, Jeff, for your CAO report. There is something, maybe, Jeff, you could debrief us regarding the solar project, can you give us a little bit more information?
All of the solar panels are currently in the ice rink, so they've been delivered, there was some supply chains and delivery delays in getting them here. A slow boat from China, literally, I assume. And, and so, yeah, they're all in the ice rink right now. There was two truckloads delivered last week. And Shem, do you know, has the electrician been down starting on some of the internal work yet? Have you seen any of that?
This Thursday, they're receiving, they're expecting another shipment of racking other components.
Okay.
They anticipate they'll hang a couple of them, burgers, and they're fully deployed next Monday.
Okay.
All right, so my next, my next ask of you, Jeff, is to know, have we contacted Shannon Phillips or somebody interested in coming to see if they want to do a press release or whatever?
We'll do a big ribbon cut and ribbon grin and everything when it's complete. Jason from N-Max, he wants to liaise a lot of that, he knows them, he has contact with one or other project, so...
Okay, so he will take care of it?
He's going to work on the provincial side, is what he's told me. Shem and I have an item to roll out a communication plan, but we intended that to be after everything was up and the switch was turned and we saw how it was going here, so hopefully, a month, thirty days maybe from now.
Question? Yeah, thank you. So, did this question also?
Did you review my FCS report?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you for trying. I appreciate it.
It was a very upsetting meeting.
Appreciate your...
My library just disappeared too.
Yes.
And the two agricultural...
Yeah, I know.
So, what do you foresee, Counselor, regarding, regarding your library?
Well, my report just disappeared, so...
You didn't send it in?
Did you? Did you store it?
Yep.
Yeah, good. Send it.
Yeah, I can do that.
Any other question, counselors, regarding those reports? So, Counselor Benry, regarding... So councillor Benri, regarding FCS, what, what do you see the future as?
We, should I say this very nicely?
Just lay it out.
We have individuals on the board who don't recognize true volunteerism. And a banquet or dinner or whatever it is lets people sit down together, associate with each other, come on common grounds, and I think that is so important. When I spoke to Jeff and he mentioned that there could be some Canada 150 money, I brought that up. And I said, look, committee, why, why do you even think that you have to do anything? I said, I've been coming to these banquets for years and they've been totally hosted by an outside source. The girls choir did it, the soccer club did it. They were, they were, the banquets and everything were done accordingly. I said, well, the acting guest speaker, I says, they were wonderful. But they just do not see that concept. And I don't know, mayor, if it's able to be out of place. If you came and sat down on the next FCS report and made some comments. I don't know at this point in time. I left very upset.
I think, I think this represents an interesting example of the independence that we've granted to all of our committees.
Exactly.
Where we've effectively said as a council, our general rule is that we don't overrule our committees' decisions.
That's exactly the truth.
And so I, on that basis, I would have to say we have to respect what their decision is and.
We let, you have let them know that we would have preferred something else. That shows not to accept what we feel and know would be a better, a better way to recognize volunteer. But I agree with councillor Balfour that they have autonomy.
It's like giving your kids their, the choice and then when they make the choice you don't like, you kind of have to stand up to make the choice.
What started this, mayor and council, was the fact that our funding for mid-year funding was very limited. And so we looked at that, at the different projects that are coming in for mid-year funding, you know, and we decided that we didn't have the funding to do the banquet plus some, some projects. And then all of a sudden, when, when the CAO come up and said there is a possibility of Canada 150 and that word possibility. But what bothers me is, is this going to be an ongoing thing now?
Well.
And, and I don't want to see it myself personally. I don't want to see a no volunteer appreciation dinner or banquet.
Okay, councillor Benri, here is the way.
I totally agree with you councillor. But at the end of the day.
Let them, let them.
Then that's our decision.
Maybe, maybe it is time that as a council, we look at what we've given our committees.
And that's what I was getting at.
The governance of the.
If we're going to give them the independence that we have given them, the autonomy, then we have to respect that even when they make decisions that we disagree with. If the alternative is for us to take some of that autonomy away from them.
Well, the thing that bothers me is if they start to make decisions that override what we as council can do financially to.
Yeah, but that's not what they're doing though. They have their budget, they're within their budget.
You know, their first approach for volunteer, I mean, their first approach was a prudent approach.
Right.
Except, except that what was lost in their picture is how important it is for all those volunteers to see themselves together as one body. That fuel the energy in this town in so many areas. And that's what is lost in not having such a recognition. So be it. But once there is none, people might call the town and say, how come? And if that's how come, I hope they have enough, how come? And hopefully that helps them to realize they need to budget that somewhere in the story. But I understand what's more important, the program or the volunteer delivers program? It's a chicken and the egg or the egg and the chicken, right? Councillor Green.
Yeah. So I understand that they do have gifts they want to distribute to volunteer. Do they have, you know what the plan is that they have for how they're going to distribute those gifts? I'm just curious. I kind of see this personally as, and I'm hoping I'm right, that, you know, that most of the FCS S board members are also volunteers. And sometimes you get volunteer burnout. And I'm hoping that maybe they'll take a year off and then they'll get feedback from enough people that will resume again, you know, the following year. That's, that's my hope and feeling about this. But, you know, if they, if they distribute the gifts, I'm thinking that they're probably going to get some feedback from, from everybody and, and people will say, we really like the banquet. And maybe they will take that into consideration in the previous year, so.
You've done your best councillor.
Yeah, I guess.
You have one vote.
My question was, it would kind of be reverse of what Bill's saying too. Those gifts, do they translate into the budgeted amount for the banquet or?
That's exactly what they've done, is they've effectively with the gifts, they're replacing the banquet expenditures with those gifts.
Right, right.
They're, I doubt very much there's any budgetary savings in doing it the way they're doing it. Gifts would be more expensive than dinner, to be honest.
Yeah.
Anyways, it is what it is. All right?
That's another question I have, just to Jeff. Have, have we ever looked into what other communities do? Is it their FCS that always does their appreciation nights? Or does their communities do it? And, you know, it'd be nice to know that.
That I don't know. It's just not something I've ever looked into.
But in the past, we had Adult Ed.
Yes.
With.
I was, I was thinking about this and I don't know what changed here. When I first started with the town, I emceed that the first two years. And Kathy took care of so much of it.
That's what I was thinking too.
And I emceed them.
And now I'm not sure what the involvement of Kathy and Adult Ed and I just don't know. There was a change and I don't know when that happened or what happened.
See, with the community awareness night, isn't it Kathy that spearheads that too?
Yeah.
As well.
Anyway, it would be nice to try that.
Yeah.
Could you explore a little bit why Adult Ed has lost that handle on the FCS?
That might have all happened when the FCS qualifications changed.
Except the volunteer appreciation remained an approved expense. You know, that, that didn't change. Yeah, I just don't know. I don't know.
Because like the seniors, for instance, used to get a grant from FCS and all of a sudden they didn't qualify.
Handy bus, that was our big one.
Councillor Green was on the committee at that time when that change was made. Maybe he can enlighten us.
Doesn't, doesn't FCS S fund the, the adult education? I'm sure that's one of their.
They fund a couple of the programs. Stand Play and there's two or three programs. A lot of their funding comes from Berndy Reeder Warner. But yes, they do fund some specific.
Anyways, that is a live and learn kind of situation and the learning might not be too pleasant.
It's, and I'll, I'm hesitant to volunteer this, but I'll throw it out there. Would council want us to apply for a Canada 150 grant for the June 15 intake? And if we get it, we use that money to host a volunteer appreciation dinner from the town at the end of the year?
Sure.
You know contingent on the grant?
I was going to raise my hand, but Green.
So if you want to make a motion to that effect, we'll apply.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll make that motion.
And I just make it enough for grand, it's catered and I don't have to deal with it.
I'll make that motion that we direct administration to look at.
To apply, to apply for Canada 150 grant.
The town host.
To, to.
To afford the town to host.
To recognize the volunteers.
Right. Thank you, mayor.
How many people do we typically have at that?
250.
We used to fill the gym there.
The whole gym was full. That's about 250.
Yeah. I would say 19 years ago, it was even north of that.
Yeah. Yeah, because I had, they had a whole bank of table on the side. I remember that.
And we thought it was limited to three.
Yeah, we were limited tickets, that's right.
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the table. Are you favoring? Thank you.
A little, it might be swapping, I'm just like saying.
Did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'll go for.
They're the ones that said they didn't want to do it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
And we're saying we want it.
We'll do it.
It's a different organization. And that's something, it's a town.
It's a town doing it.
It's a town, it's a different story.
Totally different. I just wonder why.
So they got the gift in advance and.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it both of you.
All right, so here we go. Can, can we finish the two?
Depends on how cold you want your pizza.
We're going to, 9C is a his officer report.
May I speak to that real quick?
Please.
I just, when I went over this with the mayor, I thought, this isn't making a ton of sense, but it makes a little more sense if I can just walk you through it for a minute. I met with Brad right before the council meeting. The, he's still trying to get the reporting exec software where they want it, what it's going to report, so it's not, because some of the reports it kicks out are just huge. He's extensive, every single detail of every report. So they're trying to get it concise. I thought he did a really good just report, just typed up what's going on. When you look at the first table that has the 62735. That's just what he'd inputted since April 24th to the end of the month. That's when he started inputting into it. And going forward, he's working with the company to get rid of that whole report writing piece that has the 35. Because every time they input something, it adds it as another event. So he's looking to get rid of that for the report. And then on the graph that has public littering bylaw and all the different types, that'll, that is getting filled much more, but that's only since the 24th of April. And that's why when you see Malcolm's report of his street patrols, that only goes to the 24th because then they started putting it in the system after that. So it's a bit of a mess this month and then everything should be consistent as we get moving.
But even if it's a mess in your optic, I appreciate the reporting. I appreciate the detail that is given to us. I feel it gives us a better sense of what's happening with those two gentlemen and the work they're doing in our town. And so I appreciate that much.
Question on the report. I noticed that there's a new vehicle involved in this. Jeff, can you give us an understanding of what's happening with the vehicles?
So in the budget, I think we talked about this a while back. The vehicle we have, we need a four door. In the budget was a new truck for Water Waste Water to get one this year. We're going to move Lloyd's old truck, the one Brad's currently driving. We'll strip the deckels off it. It will go to Water Waste Water because it's a great truck for there. It's just a year old, great truck. They can use that. And then we've got the four door coming in the, it's called a special services vehicle. So Ford makes it for policing. And it's coming and should be here in a couple of weeks. It's got the partition between the back. The back is just one big vinyl bench seat. There's no handles to get out from the inside. It's got strobe lights built into it. It's got all that stuff already.
So then what is happening with Malcolm?
Well, Malcolm's driving that old red truck we bought from Dennis Wilson a few years ago. But the intention is he'll take the old truck from Water Waste Water. Tim's got to do some work on it. It's a white old GM super cab, but better than this one because it's four wheel drive. And he'll use that one. So we're just moving them around a little different than we originally intended, but everybody seems satisfied.
All right, so then, thank you, Jeff. 9D, we have a 2017 project recall. Jeff, just please refresh my memory. I know at one time we were talking about Second Avenue East using that kind of asphalt products as we use on Seventh West. Can you help me a little bit?
Yeah, it'll be there. I can, I can see he doesn't have it on here. I think he just took a dollar threshold and usually mostly capital.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, it's still in the roads material budget.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was dropped on.
I'd like to say I'm really impressed with that stuff.
It seems to be holding up well, doesn't it?
Seems to be holding up well and does the job and.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I've been happy with that.
All right, so if we have no more, please councillor Balfour.
Move to recess.
Thank you. All in favor? Councillor Balfour, you want to offer a blessing?
Sure, glad to.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this food we have. At this time, we ask for a blessing upon us that we continue to serve in our council that we will be able to do so. We're grateful for this opportunity and a blessed blessing upon us in Jesus Christ.
Amen.